Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is the February 3rd Planning Commission meeting at 3:30 PM. My name's John Murphy. I'm the new chairman de jour. So please bear with me. Our name tags are missing, so if I miss a name, please bear with us. Mrs. Towns, please call the roll.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Chairman Murphy.
Here.
Mrs. Siggegaard.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly.
Here.
All members present? There is no old business to speak of. We do have two new business items. Item one, Derek Kasim representing the owner of 2611 Cypress Way in Norwood, known as Book Page and Parcel number 651-004-0231-00 by the Hamilton County Auditor. Noted. Located with an R1 single-family or what R1 one-family residential district is requesting a lot split of .05849 acres of the property from 2611 Cypress to be consolidated into 2603 Cypress Way, Norwood, Ohio. Nor is Book Page and Parcel 651-004-0228-00 by the Hamilton County Auditor.
My apologies, Chairman. I forgot to ask you to have the roll approved or the agenda approved.
I would like to make a motion to have someone make a motion to approve the agenda for today.
I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a second? Thank you, Sandra.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So I would ask Mr. Kasim or his representative to come forward if he would like to speak to the commission on this proposal, please. Your name, sir?
Derek Kasim.
Go ahead, sir.
Me and my sister, we own the house next door to each other. Right now, we share a driveway. And so basically, I would like to take over the current driveway and then add a driveway in for her so we don't have to, you know, share spaces. And then if one of us decides to sell in the future, you know, our property value will be, you know, that much more because we're not selling with a shared driveway. There's plenty of off-street parking already. We do probably need a curb cut for the new driveway. I need to do a retaining wall, nice garden, and it'll look a lot better in the future when it's all of a sudden done.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does anybody else would like to speak on this? Are you speaking solely by yourself on this issue right now?
Yes, by myself.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Kasim?
Does your sister agree with this? I was hoping you'd say yes to that one.
She's available if you want to speak to her by phone.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Kasim, you're in looking at this site, you're going to be taking out two trees to add the additional. Granted, they're on your property. It's not like you're taking out street trees, but I think you are going to plant more trees back?
Yes, no problem. The trees that are there are already dead. The ones already being cut down as we speak, well, the weather kind of delayed them on that one. But then the other one's half-dead, and then by the time we put the driveway in, we'll have to get rid of the roots, so yeah. And then I can't plant more trees, no problem.
Okay. As a follow-up, when you talk about the curb cut, you already have a 10-foot curb cut that's that is working for this driveway. You're going to put a curb cut right next to it? Is that?
It'll be five foot over, yeah.
Five foot over. And does that affect the parking, the street parking in this area? I know Cypress Way doesn't have a major amount of street parking problems. Of course, I haven't parked in that area. Maybe one of you guys know that area better, but...
It'll take up one parking spot, yes.
Okay, but there's not a parking issue?
Oh, no.
The neighbors cross the street or anything like that? Okay. Those are really the only questions I had.
So I did have a question. I was unclear, does this include the garage? Are you taking over the other garage as well?
Yeah, the garage right now is already dilapidated and needs to be tore down anyway. So eventually in the future plans, I'll basically consolidate both of them and have a nicer, bigger, oversized garage for the current driveway. So the current driveway now is a tear-down. It's a hazard, really, so...
Okay. Both of them or just the one on her side?
No, just the one on her side.
On her side, okay.
I'll ask the follow-up. Does she know that you're going to tear down her garage? Okay.
That'd be her garage.
Then I guess the reason you want that bump-out area in the end is when you build a bigger garage so you can go all the way across.
Correct. And I left her the land in the back behind it, just so she have she had that nice piece of land behind it as well, too, so I didn't want to take the whole thing.
It does look like that would leave that plot without the ability to have a garage because it would kind of be because you're kind of taking up the space where she would be able to fit one if she ever wanted one again. I don't know.
Any further discussion? I'd ask a motion to approve or deny this request from the commission?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Our next item for the new business, Mary C. Miller of Norwood Together, presenting for review conceptual drawings for the Montgomery Road Redevelopment Plan. Mary?
Well, good evening, or afternoon. How are you guys? You guys all know me. So I'm Mary C. Miller, Board President for Norwood Together. And as you know, last year we wrote a, or earlier this year, I've done last year, a grant with Hamilton County Planning and Development to create a Montgomery Road Redevelopment Corridor Plan. And so the plan is pretty much complete unless we get more feedback from you guys, and we'd like to present that to you today. Just a little bit of background, as you know, that when the group did the community agreement in 2019, one of our biggest goals was a revitalization of Montgomery Road. So we were thrilled to be able to partner with the city to write this grant and receive it, and we've had a wonderful experience working with Hamilton County to do to create the plan. Just wanted to give you a brief heads up as to who was on the steering committee. Some of you guys were at the public meetings, but I wanted to reiterate the names of the steering committee anyway, and Hillary can help me if I mess up. First of all, we have here Hillary Cannon, who is works for the Morgantile Library, and she is the Vice President of Norwood Together. We also have from Norwood, David Thompson, who is the Vice President in Charge of Affordable Housing for the Model Group. We have Ben Eilerman, who's a project manager for Over the Rhine Community Housing. And we have Sarah Allen, who works for the Center for Great Neighborhoods in Covington. Also on the committee, the steering committee, is Tim Kling, who's the President of the Chamber and also the Director of Real Estate for UDF. Liz Bloom, who is the Executive Director of the Community Building Institute for Xavier University. Ty Valise, who owns AJ's Cheesesteaks. And who am I forgetting?
Sean Comer.
Oh, and Sean Comer, who's the Director of Government Relations for Xavier University, as well as...
Tom and Catherine.
Oh, yeah, from the city. Sorry. Tom Perry and Catherine Fitzgerald. So we have acquired an extensive steering committee who've been really helpful in the process. So now I'm going to turn it over to Steve Johns, who is from the Department of Planning and Development from the county, and he's going to present the plan. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Mary C. It's been such a pleasure working with Norwood. We're very excited as a county to be able to work with Norwood as one of our largest jurisdictions in the county. And I have to say again, it's been a pleasure working with the team here. As a trained city planner, I'm always excited to be in front of a planning commission. I think a planning commissions often are dealing with kind of the day-to-day, as you just did with that previous case. And it's really exciting to be able to think about not just a day-to-day case, but something about the future of your community and where you want to take it. This is one small piece of where your community will is wanting to go, this Montgomery Road Corridor Plan. And I think it's probably a bit unusual to have this coming in front of the planning commission, the Norwood Planning Commission. You guys have been mostly a day-to-day planning commission. I encourage you to try to get more involved in these visions of your future, more of these plans, more of what is the potential for Norwood, because we know that there is so much here and so much to plan for. So that's my little, I have to say that as a planner, right? So a little bit on the process, Mary C. talked about the grant being awarded in about June. We held stakeholder interviews in July and August. About 30 people were interviewed as part of this plan. In September, the steering team reviewed initial recommendations. In October, the steering team reviewed a first final draft of the plan. In November, we had an open house that I think many of you attended, so you're familiar with the plan. And then in December, we held a virtual open house where I think close to 40 people attended our two sessions in that. So given COVID times, I think we had a fair bit of activity on the citizen engagement front. We took a little break for the holidays, and January, we refined the plan based on our input. And then we met with the Economic Development Committee about two weeks ago and presented this plan. That's another important part of the planning process. There's an old saw that plans end up on shelves and gather dust. That's why we want to run it through folks that have power to implement the plan. The planning commission in those day-to-day reviews of day-to-day planning can take this plan and as an advisory document to help inform your decisions on things that might be in this corridor. So that's a big important part of why we've really wanted to show up here at the planning commission and to have your recommendation to council, actually, it will come through the Economic Development Committee for recommendation for approval at the city level, because then it can inform things like a capital budget, other things where a plan doesn't set on a shelf but does actually get implemented. So I'll give you a quick overview of the plan. Again, I think many of you have seen this presentation already, so I'll move through it relatively quickly, but did want it to be in for the record and anyone who's watching on Norwood TV. A summary of the plan focused on five areas. We wanted to look at investing in areas with existing momentum, improve the basic infrastructure of the corridor, emphasize east-west pedestrian connections, something we call tactical urbanism is a new thing in planning, to do little small changes in the corridor to get momentum. So that's the experiment and activate piece. And then to create a strategic framework for development. I'll go into all these in just a bit more detail during this presentation. Let's see, Mr. Mouse, yes. So invest in areas with existing momentum. Wow, I hadn't been to the corridor in a bit, and the Fidelis Building looks really great. It seems like they're pretty much done with a lot of their renovations there. This area right here by the Sherman Intersection, from City Hall down to Victory Park, seems to be that area with a lot of momentum. I saw the Pike Cafes coming along. I hadn't seen that. And then some interior renovations are happening at Anna's, it looks like, already. So lots going on in this corridor. I've got the picture of the Baco working on Victory Park, getting rid of that pool, and hopefully those fences can come down, and I know that other improvements are planned there. So that's what we want to do, is the idea that this is about a 1.5-mile corridor. It's hard to have the entire thing be going up and running all at the same time. But we want to focus on places that have a lot of energy, focus there, and then have that energy spill over into other areas of the corridor. There are some secondary locations for future investment. They include the area down near the Wasson Way, lots of interest in what's happening there, near the library. The library has a facility master plan to make that site even better, and down near the Hudson Avenue intersection, where the Fire Museum is located, and then the UDF Home Office location. All right, improve basic infrastructure. We know that the corridor, particularly south of Monroe, where it hadn't been widened, has not seen a lot of refurbishment in quite some time. I think this pole is emblematic of that a little bit, that here it hasn't been painted in some time. There's some ghost poles down in that part of the corridor that don't support anything anymore, so those might be able to come down. There's a little tree well is what that's called, the little spot where a tree should go. And so, and then you can probably, if you look close enough, see that the pavement is not in the greatest shape. So there's just a lot of things that could help out the corridor with just relatively basic items. This is along Montgomery Road, just a couple miles north of here in a different jurisdiction, and you can see all the things that they've put in. They've put in stamped sidewalks, crosswalks, so you can see pedestrians belong there. They've got nice new street name signs. You can see that in the blue there. All their trees are in good shape, you know, not too big, not dead or anything. All the tree wells are being used, and the buildings look appear to be in good shape. The pavement appears to be in good shape. So all those little things about having a well-maintained right-of-way. The next piece is emphasizing east-west pedestrian connections, excuse me. So here we are in the more northern part of the corridor we looked at. This is across from Surrey Square, and this area has been widened, and it's the equivalent of about seven lanes when you count it all up, including that median to get across. That's a lot for a pedestrian to get across. So all of a sudden, Montgomery Road becomes a barrier, a way that cuts the community in half almost, rather than something that pulls people together. We really envisioned a corridor that is a place where people gather together, that they do cross to get from different activity points. So to find ways to make it easier to cross, we've looked at a couple locations, including Sherman Avenue, Mills Avenue, the Ashland-Wanda Avenues intersection, Williams Avenue, Hudson-Ivanhoe Avenues area, and the Wasson Way areas as places to emphasize pedestrian connections. Probably a little tricky to see this slide at this scale, but these are called bump-outs. So these are things that you can put to make it easier to cross. In fact, it fills the area that would normally maybe be a parking space, so it eliminates one lane on each side of a crosswalk of having to cross in the street. It also can be used as a landscaping item. You can also see here the painted zipper or zebra sidewalk. That's another way to emphasize that these crosswalks are places for pedestrians to be. Ah, tactical urbanism, experimenting and activating areas. So this is at the Lafayette Intersection. You know, maybe it's just the way I took this picture, but it looks like a lot of asphalt, and if you've been out there, it really is. Crossing this intersection on the east side of Montgomery Road is over 100 feet. It really is quite a long crosswalk for pedestrians. We saw this area and then also the sort of the Old Sorta right-of-way right here behind these buildings as an opportunity to do something bigger and better. And that opportunity is depicted in this slide, where we would actually do a temporary closure with little barriers here and maybe some fun street paint or temporary chalk in this area, possibly food trucks using that sort of right-of-way for outdoor dining to make kind of a temporary little park here. That would help with the crossing here. People wouldn't have to cross so much area that was up for cars, and just see if people like that idea. And this is the whole idea behind tactical urbanism. There's nothing really lost from putting this back to the way it is currently today if that doesn't work out. So it's just a way to test out some of these ideas. This building actually is a UDF holding, so with them being on the steering committee, they would be, I think, supporters of doing this on a temporary basis. This is really hard to see, but it's in the plan. This is a way to break up the corridor into things that are a little more identifiable. If you work from the south to the north, we know that Xavier has a big interest in the southern part of the corridor. We call that kind of the town and gowns section. Then there's a transition area between Xavier and the UDF campus. UDF has a lot of holdings up just south of Williams. There's a multifamily section where Carpenter Flats is located, just across the street from Carpenter Flats, or some other multifamily structures. We thought that would create a nice little break in all the retail and office and commercial activity for the corridor. There's then another transition section on the way up to the shopping center of Surrey Square. Here's the large Surrey Square area. And then to the city government section just above, just to the north of that. And then finally, a bit of a more auto-oriented, as you would suspect, up by the Norwood lateral, a little bit more like you would see at an interstate interchange with parking lots, hotels. So all these details are shown in the back of the plan in an appendix, which looks at the corridor in little bits and pieces. So here's at the Ivanhoe intersection, and you can see there's an idea that perhaps a light might work here, a new signal. You can see the little pink bump-outs, some additional street trees, pads for buses so that they don't warp the pavement so much. Some thoughts about enhancing the landscaping here at Norwood Plaza that Xavier owns and is on board with. We have a little tactical urbanism symbol for like, let's do something with the little fire museum. That could be another good location for a tactical urbanism intervention. Part of the recommendations that we wanted to highlight are that there is a call to make the area south of Monroe all the way to the southern jurisdictional line just a three lanes, so permanently three lanes. Right now, there's during peak hour, you can still drive, there's still two lanes in each direction, peak hour. With these bump-outs, that would make that impossible. There would just, the idea is to have one lane in each direction with a center turn lane permanently. So that's a pretty big change, because I think people are used to during rush hour having two lanes in each direction, two lanes coming out of the city of Cincinnati heading north in the evening and two lanes heading in during the morning. So I just wanted to point that out as a fairly large change. Another big change that you will see in these recommendation maps are some of the one-way streets back to two-way. Right up here at Elm and Maple, we're suggesting that those be set back to two-way. It's just a way to make things less confusing in the corridor. People particularly from out of town when they're coming into Norwood aren't expecting those one-way streets to be here. There are some traffic signal recommendations at this point, and potentially one of the signals at Elm or Maple. Those two streets are very close together. It seems redundant to have signals at both of them. And we also talked about the Lafayette Intersection and the possible addition of a signal at Ivanhoe and Hudson. I thought of particular interest to this group as a planning commission, we look at a little bit at some of the zoning changes. And there are just a couple. Most of them are focused near Williams, where there are lots of areas that are currently, so many of them, single-family uses, that are currently zoned general business. Our thought is it wouldn't be a bad idea to start to trim some of those areas that don't make sense as general business anymore. One thing we noted in the plan is that things like online retail are making it so that we don't need as many retail areas. And in fact, many of these corridors work a little bit better and look nicer when we don't have a whole strip of retail up and down for miles and miles, is what it feels like. So there's a couple of recommendations there. And then there's a little recommendation on the backside of Ivanhoe that are also single-family houses currently that you wouldn't think would transition to general business. And then this large parcel that is owned by Xavier behind Norwood Plaza. Again, I don't think on our market analysis, you would expect some very large use that is going to be general business district to go in there. We recommend changing that to office, which would be more in line with what you see Xavier developing in this area. Food for thought. The last piece I wanted to talk about was how do we get this done? Well, it's the power partnerships. The members of the steering committee that Mary C. talked about, with Xavier and UDF being on this, are excited to be part of making these changes on their own private property. For instance, Xavier is interested in getting rid of the Norwood Plaza sign and enhancing the landscaping there. United Dairy Farmers has the old Best Auto Repair site, and we've recommended in the plan that they tear down that site because it is an eyesore in the corridor. Working with Ohio Department of Transportation on helping to fund many of these improvements. I know they're doing some studies already on a couple of the intersections, and they could be a long-term funder for even more major improvements through the corridor. Of course, the county wants to be along for this ride. We have community development block grant funding that's helping to do things like Heritage Park, revamping that, and the public library I already mentioned, Metro Sorta, and HCDC, other partners that can help get this done. So my next step slides keeps getting smaller and smaller. I like this one. So what we're looking for is a recommendation from this planning commission for council adoption. Again, I think that will formally happen through the Economic Development Committee and then, of course, getting it implemented. And that means getting it into other future plans and other future capital funding documents. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this plan.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions of the planning commission?
I do. Could you talk a little bit more about the bump-outs on Montgomery Road? You're talking about how there's two lanes during rush hour going to... I love the bump-out idea because I think it would slow people down, but what would be the impact on traffic?
Yeah, so we've found that these so-called road diets, a lot of times people call them, where you're taking what might be a four-lane road. This happened on Springfield Pike in Wyoming recently, where they went from four lanes to three lanes. What was happening is that people who want to make a left turn take up one of those lanes when there's two lanes going up, and then people that are following behind them, not expecting them to make that turn, all of a sudden have to swerve over or hit their brakes really hard. So definitely a four-lane section is something that can be pretty dangerous, and moving to a three-lane section might slow down speeds but not impact capacity that much. So we've looked at the traffic counts, and as planners, we're comfortable that a three-lane section will work in that area and still be able to carry the level of traffic. We do want engineers to weigh in on that, but the traffic counts are generally lower down there. We had some questions about, all right, what about Xavier Games? I mean, that's when that area just gets crazy, right? Well, it gets crazy under the current conditions. That's just going to be something where you do need management, traffic management during those times of police officers helping traffic move, helping people find other ways to get in and out of those sites. Those will still be challenging times, but we don't want to design a roadway to deal with those 20 or so days a year, and then the rest of the time it's just facilitating high speeds and difficulty for pedestrian crossings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve, I'd just like to add to that. There were lots of complaints about people speeding down Montgomery Road, and one of the things we really talked about was traffic calming. And so a lot of the research and a lot of the things that we came up with, with the bump-outs and on-street parking, are not only ways to provide traffic calming, but to provide pedestrian safety. So those were the two big reasons for a lot of that.
One thing that you mentioned was the Xavier Games. They currently, we currently have police there doing traffic anyway, so that's real. Sorry.
So no, I was just going to say, I'm assuming these bump-outs are similar to what's in front of the high school?
Yeah.
What they did recently in front of the high school?
Yeah.
Mayor?
My concern with the bump-outs is the way that the buses flow up and down Montgomery Road. Not only do we have a lot of buses flowing up and down Montgomery Road, but we're going to have even more according to some plans that Sorta has on expanding some of their services. The bump-outs don't preclude us keeping areas where a bus actually pulls totally out of traffic to load and unload. So that would eliminate potentially a problem that we see all the time where somebody's driving along pretty fast, they want to get around, but uh-oh, a bus now has stopped right in front of them. right in front of them. So it actually could, could smooth out that flow and make it even better for people coming down with the way that our public transportation is. So.
Yes, that, we've seen that in other areas for sure, that this, again, the situation I was talking about where somebody is about to turn left, and then a bus all of a sudden stops on the other side, now no one can go. And that is a problem. Whereas this time, what's proposed is there'd be a center turn lane, so all those left turns would get out of the way. And then there'd be pull-offs for the bus, you know, in between those bump outs, where there'd be a bus stop so it could pull out of way and the flow of traffic would continue.
If I could follow up with that. The other, the other part that maybe makes me a little nervous about the bump outs would be bicycle traffic, because I'm a huge proponent of bicycle traffic. But if you put a bump out, does that mean that the bicycles that are riding there now have to go out and, and into the lane of traffic and then back in? Or is there, if we ever did some sort of bike, do you, do you, does the bump out have a way that the bicycles are not going, have to blend in, you know what I'm saying? Like blend in and blend out?
Our sense during the plan was that the bicyclists that are comfortable on Montgomery Road are going to be the folks that are going a little faster, that are a little more, if you like for a better term, professional about the biking, you know, definitely adults. That folks that are kids or families are looking to try to get across Montgomery Road a lot of times. And so that was the emphasis of the plan, is to look for ways to make the crossings safer, but not to create an environment on Montgomery Road where you would see families or kids biking like they would on the Lawson Way.
Am I allowed to step out as a citizen and ask questions?
Sure.
Yeah.
Are you sure? You're not answering me.
You can.
I mean, I've been, so when you talk about the bump outs at the high school versus the bump outs, I thought I saw which were more medium in the medium. Sometimes you'll see bump outs that have like a walk, an ingress so that you could ride, bike through it and rather than.
That is correct. So there are some design elements you can make to facilitate that.
Was this traffic study done at 5:00, by any chance?
So the traffic numbers that we used are average daily traffic, so it looks at.
5:00 is really hairy all day.
Well, in fact, that, that is part of the, the issue, is that we don't want it to be hairy. I mean, so we want it to slow it down, we want to create more order, and that's part of the piece of having the buses get out of the way and left turners get out of the way. And we don't want people making those crazy moves in a passing lane that we're seeing right now. There will be no passing lane. And so they're going to have to just stay in with the flow of traffic like everybody else.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have other, you have follow-ups?
Yeah.
The other question I had is, you, you talk about experiment, activate, and tactical urbanism, and then you throw the word intervention in there, which makes me a little nervous. Anytime somebody says intervention, I think, you know, get nervous. But when you talk about the corner at, at Lafayette, you're talking about, when you say experiment and activate, it's a temporary placement to see how it works out. And you would set a period of time where you'd say, and communicate that to the community saying, we're going to do this for a period of time, and if it works out, it works out. And if it doesn't, guess what? We'll remove all this stuff. That's, that sounds like a smart idea to sort of test it, you know, test how. Now, you couldn't do those with the bump outs, but this, the sort of, I don't know if we'd call it a pocket park, but the setting that you're talking about in there, it makes sense to try that in, in that manner, to me, you know.
Actually, if I could, you, you actually saw the city of Cincinnati, for instance, do this sort of tactical stuff because of COVID, right? They started doing outdoor dining and parking spots, and they tried it for a while, and then they said, well, we were going to keep this for a little longer. So there's lots of different ways to do that. And of course, none of it would be done without talking to the city and making sure we're all on board with it first.
I, I do have concerns about your, the recommendations on one-way to two-way, but you had mentioned that you would still have to have engineering studies done and, and other people involved in that decision-making. The safe, or the service director, the safety director, service director, has the ability to make those changes, but typically, he would not make those changes unilaterally off of just a decision or a plan like this. It would be something that we would have to do an engineering study on that with a traffic engineer that, that does that. But you alluded to that. I just wanted to make sure that's clear to others. It's not, those would not be decisions that are just made and done and, you know, you move on. It's, you make sure you have the backing to do that. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is exactly right. In fact, the resolution that we've crafted that's going to come out of Economic Development says that this is a plan, this is an advisory document with ideas, and these ideas don't become real until council takes further action. So there's great ideas in here that council and safety service director or others can pull out of it and then make decisions about this. This doesn't all of a sudden just start happening automatically.
So I do have a couple of questions about, there's several places in there where you're proposing either on a temporary or permanent basis to add like landscaping and that kind of stuff. Some of it, you know, the stuff on Xavier property, obviously Xavier would care for, but I'm assuming the city would be responsible for caring for this, anything that would be done on city property?
That's correct. So in the right-of-way, the public right-of-way, where you would see like, things like street trees, that, that would be city responsibility. The plan does call out this area that's kind of a bit of a gray zone, where a lot of times there's an edge between the right-of-way, that's clearly public property, usually where the, as far as the sidewalk goes, to then public, excuse me, private property, which we call out a couple little spots where that edge doesn't look great right now. And so that would be something where there's a recommendation in the plan about possibly a special improvement district being passed that could handle things like that, where plantings and maintenance of landscaping that's right in that kind of gray zone would be handled by a, a separate entity. That would be looking after the entire corridor. And so that there would be uniformity is a goal of that, there'd be similar maintenance throughout. That is one thing that could be looked at.
Okay.
Anything else?
I will just add that we are working with Xavier this next semester to do a research to find out if a special improvement district, how that would go. So let me do that.
So I guess one of the reasons I ask that is it's felt like in the past, the city has had, has had some struggle to keep up with everything. And so when you're talking about adding stuff, then it's like, how does that, I think that that's going better these days. And I know like, they've gotten rid of some properties, whatever, but I just want to make sure that that's like, something that the city is able to, to care for if you're adding to their burden.
Yeah, so you know, it's something that's probably beyond the detail of this kind of plan, but there's stuff like landscaping and, you know, potted plants and things like that that are relatively low cost. And then there's some of the deep refresh that needs to happen in the corridor, which is curbs and drain inlets and all that stuff, which I think in a major rehab of the road itself would, would happen. But that, those are large capital costs that, in fact, would probably help the situation on maintenance, once all those were upgraded in a big, large project like that.
Something that Lawson Way has done is just add the water bags to the new trees, and that makes a huge difference. That's something the city could easily do. And perhaps with some of the landscaping, maybe the businesses would be willing to help out and help maintain water them, you know, every other day or whatever. Maybe we could get them to step it up and help out if it's not big landscaping projects.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the commission and the, and the viewing public, this was entered as new business, so I don't know that it requires us to make a motion or take a vote on this. It was just entered for discussion, is that right?
I mean, when I asked, it was not submitted as actually a public hearing or something to do, because I would have sent it out to the people that respond back to them, give them ideas or thoughts, the fire department, the police department, things I wanted to review. But I was, it was presented to me as more, this is where we're moving, we'd like to give you, you know, an update on what we were doing.
Right, I, I would say that, I tried to somewhat address in my little preamble of how this is a, a bit of a different item than this planning commission is used to seeing. So it is a, a plan that I think you could endorse. I think having, if this was not listed as a public hearing, I, I don't know exactly how your bylaws run this particular planning commission. But it would be good at some point to get your endorsement of, of this plan.
I mean, even if it didn't require a public hearing, my question when it was brought up was, should I send this out so the planning commission has feedback from the people that normally give them feedback from my, my chair, from my aspect of it? And was checked on and was told, we're not at that point yet. We just want to make a presentation.
Yes. So, right, so I, getting to the newness of this, having a planning-type document coming through this body, is something where maybe we just give it consideration today and maybe discuss about, you know, among yourselves about how you'd like to proceed. I don't, there's no need to force a, a vote today. I think it is true that agencies like the police and fire and folks are going to take, need some time to digest a plan of this kind of thickness, and, and know that it's just an advisory document at this point. I think they wouldn't know really what to do with this document at this point.
Well, that's what was brought up to me, like the pages that are missing, that they would, that, am I misunderstanding what it, okay. That there are pages missing that they would rather those be included before you ask opinions of other people that advise this, this planning commission.
I don't think there's pages missing, but it's just that the detail.
Tables.
Oh, I thought, because that's the one that says, what does that say?
Tables to be included, yeah.
Tables of recommendation, tables of recommendation, just that there were things that weren't in here that you would rather before it was given off to other groups. But that's, go ahead, I'm sorry.
This is, we are not adopting this. We're not spending the city's money, we're not committing the city to anything. What we are doing as a planning commission is accepting this plan, applauding it, saying move it forward. Ultimately, this plan is going to city council, it'll go into the Economic Development Committee, they will look it over, then it'll go for votes. All we're doing as a, as a body here is saying, the planning commission recognizes this plan, and quite frankly, I applaud this plan. I thank you for all the work that you've done as a planner, as a commissioner, I adopt, I plan, you know. So I would make a motion that we, we approve the plan and that it moves forward to council for review and consideration. And that would be my motion. We, we approve, I don't know if we even have to use the word approve.
Endorse, possibly.
We endorse the plan and move it, and, and recommend that it get moved to council for review and consideration.
I second that.
All.
Do you need that in writing, or do you need a, you need something more on that?
We just want to endorse the plan and move it on.
Yep, move it on to council.
Call the roll, please.
Second any more discussion.
Who seconded?
Jeannie did.
Jeannie seconded.
No whole part of it, but very fair.
Well, I, I quite frankly, I almost say, as a planning commission, this is the first time we've had a plan like this. I applaud it. I, I actually, the planning commission applauds the work that you've done, and we really do appreciate it. It's, it's something that the city has needed for a long time. It gives us a path to go down, it gives us a way to, to plan capital projects. Everybody can look at it and say, this is a part I love, and they get behind it, and maybe it'll happen. And that's something that we haven't had, so I appreciate sincerely all the work that's been done.
We have a motion on the floor by the mayor to endorse the plan, a second by Jeannie seconded. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Chairman Murphy?
Yes.
Mrs. Siggler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
All those voting yes, motion to endorse the plan is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda would be the open discussion. A letter from Mr. John R. Brown addressed to Mayor Snyder, courtesy copy to Mrs. Towne, Secretary of the Norwood Planning Commission. I do not have a copy of the letter, I believe.
It should be the last page of the document.
Last page.
Jeannie, John.
Wait a minute, one more page, I do not have it. Letter dated January 22nd, 2020. Mayor Victor Snyder, City of Norwood, Norwood, Ohio. Dear Mr. Snyder, due to the recent actions of Norwood City Council, specifically the demise of the Norwood dispatch and 911 call center, I am resigning as chair of the Norwood Planning Commission. I cannot work with the council that would do away with the vital aspect in our city, in my opinion. It would not be right for me to, to work with new residents, developers, and other city officials when I feel the safety is going to be compromised. It's been an honor to serve the city for over 40 years, from the safety lane to the police department to the planning commission. I do wish you and the other members nothing but the best. Respectfully, John R. Brown, received May 25th by the.
January.
January 25th, 2020, by the building department.
September, oh, 2021, that's what it should be, 21.
Yes, it should say 2021. I move the letter be received and filed. Second?
Second.
All vote, members voting yes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I would like to, you know, take this time to thank John for his time here, and he did very well in being here on the planning commission, as well as with me on the police department for many years, so I do thank him for his service. At this time, we'd like to excuse the absent members, and there are none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
We'll have a second.
Second it.
All those in favor voting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, Pam, meeting adjourned. Thank you.